Being six o'clock on Monday, April 28th, 2025, I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded.
That's it?
Yep. And those go back in there?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn the board's attention to page three, four, and five of our agenda. And I'm going to entertain a motion to approve all of the one-day entertainment licenses and all of the one-day wine and malt licenses as listed on pages three, four, and five.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set. If you want to stay, join us, but if, but you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, we don't have an appointment until... Do you want me to wait until 6:05, or can I?
I'll give her a call and just tell them.
No urgency, Doug. It's only five minutes. We'll just wait. That's fine.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Give five minutes if you want to start.
So with respect to the Affordable Housing Trust, which met last week, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is now in the process of helping the trust in a couple of key areas. One of them is developing a list of priority affordable housing sites, and they've narrowed that down to nine sites and a list of affordable...
And I'm sorry, BC, that's nine sites in Essex?
Yeah. So one thing that a housing production plan does is it says, "If you had an opportunity, what are the properties that would be most beneficial, perhaps?" That doesn't mean that it's something you can get your hands on right away, but it just points up the ability to shoot for something if you ever see it. And then there were, then there was a list of goals that the Planning Council came up with, and the Affordable Housing Trust was able to narrow that down to five goals that they want to work with. Now, if you'd like, I can go into more detail about what that, what those were.
Only if, can you send it to us via email?
Yeah, I can send it to you later.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did we see the sites? No?
No, you have not seen it, but I can send you everything and show you which ones were chosen. The next item has to do with the fact that the selectman made a data and information request of the Manchester Essex Regional School District. That request was made on the 15th of April, and we do not have any response to that request as yet. Now, the request indicates that existing data, the board was asking for that to be handled as a public records request, wherein there are 10 days for the party that's being asked for the records to at least reply. You don't necessarily have to come up with the records, but you have to provide a summary of what it will take to get the records. Maybe there's a cost to it. Maybe there's an indication that it will take longer because of whatever reason. But we didn't get anything. So you didn't get any records, but you also did not get a response.
Who's the response?
We didn't, we got a response that says we're working on it.
The Board of Selectmen.
We didn't?
No, they just said, "Should we consider this a public records request?" And Brendan said yes.
Okay.
And today is day 10?
I believe it is. 10 working days.
10 working days.
So we didn't see anything. Maybe you'll see something tomorrow. I don't know. But there isn't much to talk about. You've all seen what's in the request.
Right.
I had it on here in the event that it came in time for the meeting.
Today's the 10th day?
Yes. Starting counting at the day after the request was made.
Is it me again? I'm glad you...
Annual Town Meeting motions, it's something that we've gone over. I do have a couple of things to point out. If I can find my copy of the motions here.
Do you want my copy?
Well, no, because I've got notes on it. Thought it was right over here. In fact, I remember putting it back in the stack. That's other business.
Ruth, I'm sorry, well, he's looking for that. Did we put in the same request for Essex Tech?
We did.
We did?
And they provided a reply, I think?
Within 24 hours, yes.
I'll wait till when he comes.
Okay. So with respect to the motions, we've already kind of been over them, but I wanted to point out, under Articles Seven and Eight, it's our understanding that Kate Kosch-Sonquist of the School Committee will be reading those. I don't have a definite confirmation of that, but I think, Ruth, you mentioned that they talked about it at a meeting.
They talked about it at the school committee meeting. They did not take a vote, but hearing the conversation at the table, I would say that that would be my expectation. I'm hoping that Kate joins us this evening for the department head meeting, and we can confirm.
And then I'll mention with respect to Article 26, which is for the sewer flow, for the development that a developer is interested at 44 Main Street. After the warrant was signed, and it was signed with affordable housing as the feature, the developer indicated that they would rather do all 55-plus. That is going to be in scope. And I put together a draft motion, but Town Council's looking at it. We spoke to him earlier this morning, and there'll be probably some changes. We also got input from the attorney representing the developer as to what they thought would be necessary in the motion, and we will, we'll keep working on that.
But at the very least, it could be brought up, as is on Town Meeting floor. Change to that?
Sure. Right now, the draft motion that you have, I know is not the final motion because it doesn't have Town Council's final word on it yet. But even when that gets recommended to you, and you see it just before Town Meeting, somebody could amend even that on the floor, yes. And then finally, Article 39, we're still waiting for a figure. That's the article that's where we're allowed to propose increases to different budget, existing fiscal year budget line items.
And can I ask a question in regards to Article 35?
Yep.
So this is actually moving the money from one account that is the Memorial Park over to the Grove, and didn't we say we, I was confused at that last meeting I attended.
So at the Conserva, at the Community Preservation Committee meeting, the initial, the issue with this was, the volunteers that want to move forward with creating the tennis court/pickleball court contacted me on the Friday before we met, or it was the Thursday, and they wanted to talk about moving the money. We needed to close the warrant. So Brendan said, "Let's put an article there to hold it. We don't know what the wording's going to be, but we need to have it because we're closing the warrant." So we put it on here as moving the money from Memorial Park to Centennial Grove. Since then, we had the Community Preservation Committee meeting a week and a half ago. There were people opposed to moving the money, and some people there in favor of it. So because the coffers of the community preservation accounts had enough money, they were considering appropriating a different 49-999-99 for Centennial Grove to do a pickleball project up there as well. So this may get amended.
On its own.
On its own, standing on its own.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we were, everybody was aware that it made.
You wouldn't even have to amend this. You would just indefinitely postpone this, and the project could be added under Article 36. Because Article 36 is where we're doing the new appropriations for the Community Preservation Act, and there is always a specific handout. And we, if they vote for it, which I think they're meeting this week.
This week.
Has it, that been set? Because I haven't seen it.
They...
I can't recall.
Look, Jay sent me a text message. I'll look as soon as the meeting ends, and I'll tell you.
But they haven't, but what you're saying is they haven't actually decided on a recommendation.
Correct.
Yeah. So they're going to have to meet again before Town Meeting, because if they don't, then the Town Meeting cannot act on it.
So there's a group that wants to keep the tennis courts here because that's all that can go here?
Correct.
Pickleball cannot.
Correct.
And there are others that want to shift it over or, and/or pickleball over there?
Correct.
It'd be the same courts?
Same court.
Or only pickleball?
No, it would be the same court, and it would be both tennis and pickleball.
It would be, okay.
And then last question for me is the article one that I'm going to be reading. Just bark and lumber, you're not going to do pound?
No. If you, and if you look at your Town Meeting binder, I did a little write-up in there that talks about the differences.
I'm sorry. That's why I was asking.
And so it's been the town's tradition to, basically, it allows for the appointment of a surveyor, bark and lumber, but nothing actually ever goes beyond that. It's a tradition, I think, just to touch off the meeting. That's about it.
And I, and I looked, and quite a few towns do say the same thing, so.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Hi, we just want to say thank you because, you just said we're all set.
No, you can, so Maureen, what I said to Doug was that your applications are perfect. They're all complete. We didn't take a motion because you weren't in the room, so we wanted to make sure that you had nothing else to add before we did take a motion.
Very good.
You're in good shape. Okay. So for the board, you have before you on page, at the bottom of page two, we have two different annual licenses. We have annual weekday entertainment for Woodman's Salt Marsh Tent in Grassy Area, Doug Woodman, 119 Main Street. We have a second one for Woodman's Essex Room Lawn, Doug Woodman, 125 Main Street. And then we have two annual Sunday entertainment licenses, Woodman's Salt Marsh Tent in Grassy Area, Doug Woodman, 119 Main Street, and Woodman's Essex Room Lawn, Douglas Woodman, 125 Main Street. The, the whole board, I know, has already looked through the applications and read them. Everything was in perfect order. Thank you. Wendy, I know you spent a lot of time on that, so thank you all.
Thank you all for your help. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve all four licenses as listed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
So on a complete side note, if we put an electric charge station in the parking lot, do we have to come and get permission, or can we do that? I know the chain has one.
You'd need to get the necessary electrical permit.
Say again?
You'd need to get the necessary electrical permit.
Right. But do we have to come in front of the board to ask to put a charge station on the?
No, I mean, that's your private property.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for that.
And Maureen, Jeff upstairs, Jeff Thomas, in the, in the Board of Health office can help you with the electrical permit, or, I mean, an electrician's going to pull it, so you can do it right online.
So you just get the electric permit online, then you file, then Raimi would just come and put them in place or something, and then I heard there's a MassSave, there's also a credit too.
And Raimi will have all that info for you.
And your contractor will end up doing DigSafe as well, because it sounds like they're going to excavate to put in a line, and that's up to the contractor.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, BC.
We love that.
Renewal Paglia Park.
So next is with respect to Paglia Park. We are in the process right now of returning the park to have the amenities that it had prior to the bridge project, and consequently, we are up on the, the two-year period where the owner of the property considers relicensing the parcel to the town for use as a park. She has done that. I have in my hand an executed agreement for the next two-year period for the board's consideration.
Is that what it normally is, two years?
Two years at a time, yeah.
I will entertain a motion to countersign the license agreement with the owners of Paglia Park.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And while that's finishing up, the next item has to do with the Tobacco Lake Study, and we actually do now have a consultant contract ready to go. The funding for this project is $20,000 from a state legislative earmark that the town of Essex has, $15,000 from the town of Essex, $15,000 from the town of Hamilton, that's $50,000. This scope of services is around, it's $49,453, $53. And I know that Selectmen Fippen has reviewed the scope of services as the board's liaison to environmental issues, and I think you're okay with it?
Yeah, yeah. No, it looks good.
So if the board has no further questions, I do have for the chairman's signature a contract with Applied Watershed Sciences LLC.
I will entertain a motion to vote to sign the contract with Applied Watershed Sciences.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I want to announce that fortunately, the town will be the recipient of a land use planning grant for updating the town's open space plan, $46,700. Our town planner wrote that grant application. The board approved and submitted it. And fortunately, it took 10 months. It took that particular program a long time to determine who was going to get the money, and they've extended the performance period because if you, if you released it now, there'd be a couple of months left to actually do the work. The chairman signed the grant paperwork already, and when MAPC is ready, because that's the contractor we will use to discharge the grant contra, grant scope of services, I want to recommend that the board authorize the chairman to sign the contract with MAPC. So this would be a vote to ratify the chairman's signature of the grant paperwork and to authorize the chairman to sign the contract with MAPC.
What's the new due date for it?
It's in 2026, and I think they said it was late 2026. I don't have that right in front of me.
Over a year.
Yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion to ratify my signature on the grant contract paperwork and to authorize me to sign the contract with MAPC for the, to serve as the town's grant consultant.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And BC, can I just ask you, because I know that you're working on the migration. Is that on your list here? Did I miss it?
I believe there's an item there that explains it, but it wasn't for discussion. It's explaining that, you know, where we are in the process.
Yeah, I just want to offer my services to be able to test as a resident.
Great.
Because I know that, you know, there'll be opportunity for testing.
Yep, I think in my...
Yeah, the migration plan, because it's, I'd like to test it before it gets migrated, and usually they can do that.
Yeah, I will talk to them about that. In my report, you'll see some, some dates that they have in mind.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $206,458.19.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes to the selectmen's April 14th, 2025, open meeting and executive session.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the resignation of Diane Corliss as the Assistant Animal Control Officer.
What was the reason for that?
There was an email in the folder from her.
Was?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see that, I guess.
We'll pass that to you. It's personal, so we'll not read that out loud.
Okay. So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, the next item is a replacement for the Assistant Animal Control Officer. Was there somebody interested?
I do not have a name. The animal control officer told me that there might be someone that she would have in mind, but we did not receive anything by meeting time.
Okay, so we'll...
So we can put it on next time.
Put it on the next time. Perfect.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Um...
I just saw the individual emails.
The next item for discussion, oh, can you pass that to Peter? The next item for discussion is to consider allowing a limited number of non-resident boat launch and parking permits by lottery for the 2025 boating season and a premium fee. So I know that everybody wanted to sleep on that and revisited it this meeting.
I, I think it's a great idea, is, if we haven't heard any feedback from the public from the last meeting.
We have heard nothing.
Yeah, it seems to make sense. You know, my concerns were laid, you know, and it seems to be like it's a good way to get some revenue and allow some additional voters.
And we may find it doesn't, we don't get any, and we move on, or we may find...
So we need to talk about two things. Number one, what that fee is, and then how many we want to do in season one. So I'm of the mindset to start small. I don't want to take up too many spots. We don't want to make it so it's difficult for the residents. So the number in my head was 10.
10 spots?
10 spots. Well, 10, 10 passes, 10 lottery numbers.
Yeah.
As long as whatever we give to them, make sure that they know that they can't park at the launch. They have to park.
Oh, it's, the language will be specific in the advertisement.
Yeah.
And we'll need to put up some signage for them, I'm sure, because...
There's already signage that says if you're not a resident, you have to park.
Down here, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and I think the idea of go big or go home, let's go with $1,000 and see if there's any takers. And if there's not, so it's no harm, no foul, at least we tried it. So I will entertain a motion to do a lottery for 10 non-resident boat launch season pass holders at $1,000 apiece to be used only in the dirt lot behind the tennis court.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now with respect to that, would you like me to develop some kind of advertising plan? Do you have ideas of where you want to put this, or?
Can we do the same thing that we did with the Gregory Island Road Lots?
Yeah.
Because that was pretty successful.
Yep. And is it your intent to have this lottery in a public drawing, perhaps at your next, well, on May 19th, let's say?
Yeah, let's do it on May 19th.
Okay, that gives us time to do...
The better.
Right, and it's recorded, so as we pick them out, we can read the names publicly live. Okay, next, everybody is in possession of a lovely handwritten note from Shirley DeSenza. The next item on our agenda is to consider the town's placement of a memorial bench at Nine Beach Circle in memory of Alfred DeSenza and his many contributions and improvements to Canomo Point.
So Nine Beach Circle is currently a vacant property in between, believe it or not, we still have a leased property on Beach Circle number 11, and Mrs. DeSenza lives at seven. And although the board indicated that you're not interested in putting any more benches out front, this is a request to put a bench on Beach Circle, and there are none that I know of. Her suggestion is that not only you allow it, but that the town come up with the funds, which we do have, to pay for it. So it's up to the board as to whether you want to allow it and pay, or just allow it and have the family do it, or not allow it at all.
I, for me, the concern is, I know that the board went down, and we marked all the benches that were down there. We took account, and we've been telling people no to more benches down there for a long time, and I just had a request three, four weeks ago, I think I sent that to you, for somebody that wanted a bench down there, and we told them no when they lost their mother-in-law. So I'm...
In this location or at the very end?
No, but we've been saying we're not putting any more benches down at Canomo Point. So if this had been an op, an option, I think people would have grabbed it. We weren't putting it out there as an option.
But the benches that are there now, are they memorials to every, is every one of them a memorial?
I would say yes.
I think there's a plaque of some kind on each one, and they were all moved for the seawall project, stored, and then put back again in the exact locations.
It seems like this guy did a lot of work down there and really helped out significantly. So I think he's deserving, but I think you have a good, good point, Ruth, as far as whether, what are we doing? Are we allowing more benches? And where's the next place we allow more benches? Robbins Island Road or?
Right. Well, this is the point, is if we're going to allow Beach Circle, is it just this one, and then we close it? Are we going to go down there and do another schematic design of where we can put benches and open it up again? But then we've had three or four people we've told no to since we've closed the benches. So they should almost get first right of refusal if we're going to be identifying spots that are able to take benches now. And then my only other point to this is that this particular location that they're talking about, which is Nine Beach Circle, is a town-owned parcel that we've been kind of intentionally keeping a blank slate, because at some point in the future, that other house that sits right beside clamorous beach, there is a Canomo Point plan with a future development to potentially put a park down there. So are we going to work around this bench? Are we going to put it there?
Incorporate it or whatever.
I mean, you could, you could say that in the future, if you're going to actually create a park there, you might open it up for people to possibly contribute in that way.
That might be the best way, and maybe if we have the funding, the town would do that.
It's possible.
But we don't know when there would be a, when that property would become...
We don't.
So we have done this similar in the past. We're talking Beach Circle, not up at, not up in the main area, correct?
That's right. That's the request.
Yeah, and I think, it gets hard because everybody's going to want a bench, especially if the town's paying for it. But like he said, you know, reading it, he, that did seem like the person did an awful lot down there.
So the family that came to me a few weeks ago was the DeWitt family that wanted a bench down at Canomo Point, and the DeWitts also do a lot in town.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, I, I just want to make sure that we're...
Well, if you stay, if you stay with, you know, you really don't want any more benches there until the next...
Iteration of whatever the design is.
Question of the plan is developed. I think that you'll be able to live with that, because it's...
I think that's the way to go, you know, is to incorporate it into the park itself, because we're going to need benches in the park.
Sure.
You know?
I mean, that's, that's a good plan. So we'll wait until we know what the future of that park looks like.
Yeah.
All right, I'll let her know.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to ratify my signature on contract documents for firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of $2,761.27.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 BC, would you like to explain the next one to us?
So this is simply a chance to start talking about some of the things that are going on that have common interest across the town. So one of them, of course, is the fuel depot, and during that process, you know, we discovered that there's some material that really should be moved off the town's property and properly disposed of. And the question is, you know, does the board want to sit down with the Board of Public Works in the future and talk about anything that we have common interest in so that you can start to understand where they're going with any particular issue?
What other issues do you think, besides the pile of dirt there?
The, the way the fuel depot works, that's for sure.
Okay, yeah.
Because the property is managed by them, but all departments are going to want access in and out of there. We should talk a little bit more about the secondary treatment in Gloucester.
Right.
Now that we know that Gloucester is not going to be billing the town for probably a couple fiscal years later than we thought, because they don't have a debt payment due until later than we thought, continue to talk about that. I would say we should also talk about the, the end of the sewer construction debt, because that opens up another fund, which is the interest surplus fund, which I believe they want to use for capital needs. But you could also use a portion of that fund to defray a portion of the secondary treatment project in Gloucester. So I think there's a lot to talk about on the horizon.
I, I think it would be great if we could come up with an agenda and have discussions about some of these and have where we're going next.
Yeah, sounds great.
What control do we have, though? Any?
None.
Yeah, so it's just getting them to think and lay out.
Well, to be honest with you, for me...
Well, with respect to the, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, with respect to the secondary treatment, right, we talked in concept about different issues, and we know that we're, right now, we landed on the issuance of new betterments. The selectmen initiate that. So you... The selectmen initiate that, so you actually have control over that matter.
Right.
But it's something where, you know, I don't think they want to put it all into their rate.
No, and honestly, the, the approximately three million dollars that we have that was raised from the interest payments from the sewer betterments, really because those came from the betterments from the people that have sewer connections, not necessarily, they're not necessarily on sewer. That money should really go to defray the entire cost, not the entire cost. We know that our portion, six million dollars, but the three million dollars that we have in reserve should be the first three million we spend. I realize that they have capital expenses as well, but those funds came from the betterment people.
Right, and see, that, that kind of, that kind of discussion, you can only really have with them, you know, in person, so...
And for me, so the point that I wanted to make is that I do, I feel we should have a meeting so that it can be noted, the public can be aware that these things are being discussed. I, I think it's important, because I think so many times, things happen, and then we get the, how the heck did that, why is that, that was stupid?
Right.
Type of comments.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's good to help them sort of organize their thoughts as well, if, if they haven't already.
Sure.
So with respect to that, since they generally meet during nights when you meet, we could either do it later in one of your meetings, or we could look at a date that would work for them on another evening.
I'd be fine, if, as long as we can have some type of recording or meeting notes the next day, to, even if we did a separate, just to talk...
How long do their meetings usually last?
About forty-five minutes.
Yeah, so we could...
They could come to your meeting on the nineteenth.
They actually changed their day from Tuesdays to Mondays, because they thought it was going to be easier when they had joint meetings with us to already be meeting, but that hasn't materialized.
So maybe we should, maybe set aside a time and...
And maybe they could meet downstairs?
Yeah, that's what they've done before, meet on the first, first or second floor, and then come up.
And if you'd cover it at a regular meeting, it will be covered here for the public to see.
Correct, that'd be great.
So let me, let me try to work that out.
So, next, we started this discussion previously, considering whether or not the Grove Cottage should be granted an indoor entertainment license with appropriate controls. So this is part of the Economic Development Committee's plan to be able to do rentals at the cottage and the pavilion, and one of the things, I know that Donna Roy is really spearheading a lot of the initiation of what happens at event venues, and one of the things she said is that if, in fact, the Grove Cottage has an annual indoor entertainment license, it's much more attractive for people that can just, they don't have to come before us, get permission, they know that as part of the rental, it comes with the ability to hire a band, or guitarist, or whatever.
Is that something we can grant to...
Yeah.
It's just like, it's...
Yeah, you would put constraints on it, and so they would look at the license, and we would say during the rental, okay, but you can't do this, and you can't put the windows open.
Right.
And you can't have it so loud that it carries, you know, outside of the building, or whatever it is we're going to say.
Do we go through the annual license process, or we just, we can just authorize it, whatever, whatever restrictions we want?
You can just grant it, because you're both the, right, exactly.
Yeah.
But I would like to define that, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see how the Grove could be, the cottage could be a good place for an eighteen-piece band, versus...
Right, so you, you need to give some thought to the parameters involved.
Right, correct.
And it's something that, you know, I don't think we have to do this, like, tomorrow. Maybe it would be the first meeting in June, you talk about it, or something like that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
That makes sense?
So the restoration of that building is going to be pretty much the same inside, big, open area?
It's not changing at all.
Yeah.
And right now, we're looking at getting assistance from volunteer professional tradespeople to put a couple of through-the-wall heating and cooling units in.
Okay.
They're not the most efficient things, but they'll only be used during the event, and the event is going to defray the cost.
Right.
And that's just like till October?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's still going to be winterized.
It's not year-round, it's just to take the chill off.
That's right. Otherwise, you'd have to heat the building year-round.
Yeah.
That's right. So I think that's going to come along really well. If you go down there now, you'll see that the painting of the trim, some of it was done over the weekend, and then I know that the YMCA, working with EBSCO, is going to do more of that work in late May. So it's, it's starting to look a lot better down there.
Is that the EBSCO volunteer?
Yes.
Yeah. Work to fray, or whatever they call it, yeah, that's nice.
So next is to consider revisiting the rental rate structure for the facilities at Centennial Grove. Revisions to be made to the Centennial Grove regulations, along with fire safety and Camp Dory information, or any other proposed changes. So, I brought this with me this evening. We haven't had an opportunity to circulate that to the board.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
So we can, we can bring it up again at another time, if you want. The nineteenth, probably, although you could, you probably have enough time on the fifth to talk about it a little bit, if you want. I know that's a short meeting.
Do you want to email it to, I'll send this to you in an electronic version?
All right.
And then we can circulate that.
So we can talk about it on the fifth?
Sure.
We'll have time, why don't we just discuss it, at least give us a, you know, the elevator version of it now?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's basically just an Excel spreadsheet that shows you the breakdown, because when we first received it, it just said time slots were like day and evening, so they defined these more.
Okay.
And that would be something we'd put on the website once we approve it?
Right, yes, this whole thing will go on the website. So they defined the timeframe, spring is April fifteenth to May thirty-first, summer is June first to September fifteenth, fall is nine fifteen to eleven fifteen. They have the times from nine to two and four to nine, all day being, they just wrote all day, and then they just changed the fees a little bit, so not a ton of changes, you can kind of see some of the notes.
Do the fees change with the season? Is that why they've spoken into seasons?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's the resident rate and the non-resident rate.
Right.
And what we have really is, you know, we're talking about the Grove regulations, so we would incorporate that fee structure into the regulations, we would modify the regulations, and also, as it says on the agenda, we talked about last time, things like the Camp Dory statement that we want to put in there, fire safety statement that I'm waiting for the fire chief to give me. So you'd be talking about making any types of changes that you wanted to the regulations, that's just one facet of it.
And that's what I, I wanted to just reiterate, as far as with an alcohol license, I know that the request came in that they didn't want to have to have a police, and I think we discussed it. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that alcohol, water, you know, you need, I don't know if a police needs to be there for the whole four hours of the whole event.
It'd be a lifeguard.
I know.
Yeah, well, just, you know, keep thinking about it, because that's one of the things that you need to settle one way or the other. Leave it alone, or change it.
Okay. Next is to consider a request from the Chabaco Lake and Watershed Association to rent the Grove on June nineteenth from five to eight P.M. This was something else that we tabled.
This was the thing for the third graders, and...
No, no.
No.
This is the, the association...
For an event for themselves, yeah.
Yeah, having, I think, a somersaultist event.
Okay, yeah, the other one was, that's the next on the Y, yeah.
So...
Did we get an actual request?
Yes.
It was an email.
Yeah, and you had that in, that handout in last meeting's package, and in this meeting's package.
And that's all outside? It's not, none of the facilities?
No, they wanted to rent the pavilion.
They want to use the pavilion, but not the cottage.
The new building, not the cottage, they want the pavilion.
Yeah, Alva, maybe, maybe I'm thinking of, the YMCA was in this package.
Yeah, the YMCA, I saw.
Yeah.
This one here, I didn't see, because I don't, I don't remember whether or not they were looking at alcohol or entertainment.
We saw an email or something.
So what they, what they're asking right now is whether or not the board will entertain the idea of them using it at all.
Right.
Because it's a case-by-case with the pavilion this year, and then if you say yes, then they're going to decide whether they want to have alcohol, which means police and an insurance policy, and they're going to decide whether they would ask for any type of entertainment.
How many people? Do they have any idea?
Oh, I'm guessing it'd be at least a hundred people. It's a pretty big association.
Yeah, I mean, they are spearheading the, the work for the town on the, the lake itself.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
So they, they do benefit the town.
Yeah. They'll pay the fee, too, they're not even asking for a waiver necessarily.
Right.
But the question is, do you see them being able to use it at all? Then they would have to come back with a much more detailed description, including applications for the necessary permits.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm not seeing an issue. If it is the, the somersaultist, something.
That's what they're planning, yeah.
What's the state of the pavilion? What will that be?
The pavilion's in great shape, but I think before we make a decision, we should send an email to Dan and see where we're at with the restrooms, because if they're going to have a lull down there and all the construction equipment, we should just make sure that they have it.
My, my concern would be the grounds, are the grounds safe enough to walk? Even with fifty people, that's...
At this moment, yes, they are safe.
It's all graded.
We were just up there, meeting a couple of weeks ago, everything would be fine for an event up there, provided that the equipment that was up there working when we were up there isn't still digging earth, because there was, if it's still kind of a construction site, we may not want to allow this, but for the most part, no problem.
They'll have to fence it off anyway, because in a couple of weeks after that, it'll be the Camp Dory.
Right.
So why don't I check in with Dan, and if Dan says that's something that can be cordoned off, worked around, then I'll let them know that they should come in with a detailed proposal.
Okay.
And then the next one is, another one that we tabled, this is consider a request from the YMCA to hold a fundraiser at Centennial Grove Pavilion in August. This was the one, Peter, I think you're referring to.
It benefits Essex students.
Yeah.
And so same, same type of thing, determine whether it could be done safely, and then ask them, you do have a lot of details from, from these folks.
Yes.
Yeah, this is quite a bit later.
Yeah, it is.
And they, they would have been there all summer long.
Would it, would it be after the camp is over?
Uh, the day is August.
I do believe it's the twentieth.
That's right about when the camp ends.
The twentieth, yeah, it could be right about when it ends. So I'll check with Dan Mayer on those things, and then talk to the two groups.
Okay.
You'll, you'll have permits come back before you, anyway, to approve.
And then we received an email from the superintendent of schools, and it just says, "At the last school committee meeting, I was tasked with reaching out to check in on the plan for scheduling a second round of town meetings. While we are hopeful for the positive outcome on the twelfth, would like to be prepared in case it doesn't pass. It would be helpful to have a rough idea of which week those meetings might take place." And then it just goes on to say that "The school committee has already set aside May thirteenth as a tentative meeting date if they need to reconsider the budget. If no decision is made that night, their next meeting will be on May twentieth. I can't imagine it will take more than two meetings to come to a conclusion."
Is there any requirements of things that need to be accomplished between the two meetings?
By the...
The first and the second? Do you, does something have to happen?
The school committee, if it doesn't pass...
Yeah.
Which means either the vote doesn't pass on the twelfth at the ballot, or one or the other parts, or both parts don't pass at the town meeting, that's a no vote.
Right.
And chapter seventy-one then requires the school committee within thirty days to reconsider the budget. It could come back as is, less, or even more.
So they just have to meet on it?
And, and make a, a new recommendation. And then it's up to the towns to have another town meeting.
Yeah.
To consider that, and in the case of Essex, likely a, a special election, because it's not likely that it will come down to the point where we can fit it within the levy no matter what. Could be a smaller override, but not no override.
And they said they were scheduling the school committee meeting for what, the day after the last town meeting, or...
So they scheduled it for May thirteenth, which is the day after our election.
Essex election.
Yeah, okay.
And, and this is more just to, if it, if the election doesn't pass, I'm assuming we'll have a count by the thirteenth in the morning.
Yeah, you will.
And if it's, if the, if the election vote comes in as no, then this is to just revisit and get together as a group, like...
Or even if the town meeting component, one of the components was a no, it's still a no vote, which kicks in the second phase.
That would just be sooner, right.
Yeah, but you, you know, that might go through well, and then you don't understand until the election whether, whether that comes through.
So we have timelines that we have to hit, though, so what is our timeframe for posting versus having the meeting? Is it fourteen days?
It's fourteen days, but with respect to a special election, it's thirty-five days. The selectmen have to present to the town clerk the language for the ballot thirty-five days prior to the election date.
Okay.
So that's actually the one that would really be the controller.
Right.
For the election, not the town meeting.
Right, the town meeting is fourteen days in advance, the selectmen vote on it, and, and deliver it to the town clerk, it has to be posted fourteen days in advance. So, you know, in reality, it's like, you, eighteen days, or call it whatever, right, to get a constable to post it. But the other one is thirty-five days from the time that you give the town clerk the election, the ballot language.
So when you say thirty-five days, this is the special?
Special election.
Special election.
We could, we could authorize a special election now for thirty-five days out.
You don't know what the number's going to be, and the number has to be on the, on the ballot.
Okay, right, okay.
Because if the number changes at all, it's a different number.
Okay, what about for the town meeting? You have to have the exact number, or that can be...
You do not, you could say sum of money for that. With respect to the way we did it for annual town meeting, I believe we put, I'm going to, let me take a look, trying to remember if we put the actual number in there, because the number has to match.
Yeah, so if it fails, a town meeting passes at, in the election, do we need to have another election, or just another town meeting?
You don't necessarily have to have another election, but if the number changes...
Yeah.
You might not want the vote.
Right.
It all depends.
Right.
So it's really something you, you...
So we're looking at a long time, no matter what it sounds like.
It's hard to consider it all, at all in advance, and just put it on autopilot, I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
So, and I'm looking at this, and it doesn't, I'm not sure of the details, it says, "School committee has already set aside May thirteenth as a tentative meeting date." So is this a meeting date like we did before, where it was all the boards?
No.
No.
This is the school committee to get together for their own meeting to reconsider the budget, and they're going to then, the next day, send an email that says, "We've reconsidered, and we're not changing it."
Okay.
Because they have thirty days, they're, they're going to attempt to settle it one day after.
Right.
But if it needs another meeting cycle, it won't even, it would be a little longer, but it will be within thirty days, and then once you know what...
Then you can have the town meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and you know what to put on the ballot.
My question is, the thirty-five days, is that business days, or calendar?
Thirty-five calendar days.
Calendar days, so...
So is the fourteen days, too.
Right, but their goal is to have a date, so that they, their concern is a one-twelfth But their goal is to have a date, so that they, their concern is a 1/12 budget. The longer we wait to schedule, the more of a delay they have on this budget. If we look at their latest date, which is May 20th, and we go 35 days from there, it brings us to June 24th.
And that's if you voted, let's say, the next day.
The next day.
Right.
Built in two days, right? Because you have to hear what they say. Then you have to have a meeting, and then the next day after that is when you give it to the town clerk. So you have to add two days to that.
All right.
So it's 37 days.
So do you have to, you have to do both, right? A town meeting, a special town meeting and a special election?
Yes. If the number doesn't change, and it passed at the ballot but failed at town meeting.
Have to do an election.
That's right.
Yeah.
But there are many different moving parts, so.
So 37 days brings you to June 26th, which is a Thursday.
So you'd probably go.
So you'd go with probably the Monday.
Right.
For a town meeting. So that would be June 30th. And then do you have to wait the one week to go to the ballot?
You could coincide it so that it's the next day.
Do you do it the next day? So could we do?
Because for the annual town meeting, an annual election, it says, "It shall be one week after the annual town meeting." Special election could be timed anytime you want.
So for the purposes of having the school have some sort of a commitment, does it make sense for us to say that should the override not pass, we will hold the next special town meeting on June 30th?
Which is as soon as we can.
Which is, well, that's as soon as we can from their May 20th date. But if they meet on May 13th and they pass something, we could meet sooner. But I would rather plan for the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, it's only another week.
And you have 45 days after you get their answer. So you're still acting within your timeline.
Right.
So you could say that there'll be a special town meeting on Monday, June 30th, and a special election on Tuesday, July 1st.
God, that's such a bad time for a lot of people to vote, you know?
That's how it sets up in the way the law works.
Not much you can do.
We don't have to commit. I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Give them a sense of this is moving forward. You know, we have a plan.
Yeah, I mean, we want to do it as soon as we can. Because we don't want to leave it hanging, for sure.
I mean, the soon as you can would be really, I don't think you want to sign an election warrant until you know what they said, right? You probably don't want to do that.
Right.
So you find out what they said, which could happen as early as the 13th, right? Is what we're being told.
So we could call a special selectmen's meeting on the 14th if we wanted to. We could meet in the morning to.
To then.
Well, but that's only if they communicate with us that night.
Well, you could.
I might be being too ambitious.
What's the day of the week? Is the 14th?
Wednesday.
Do the 15th?
Do the 15th.
Selectmen could meet on the evening of the 15th. If, so you could have two plans. If you delivered something at their first meeting, it's this, otherwise it's that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean.
And then you put, say, 30, well, if the board of selectmen meets on the 15th, you could sign both things. And so on the 16th, you could deliver it. So it would be 35 days from the 16th.
Okay.
When is Manchester's? Their election is next week, right?
Tonight.
Yeah.
But they.
So they're a lot earlier.
Their town meeting is tonight, but they don't have an override.
They're doing it within levy.
Right.
Right, that's right. Yeah, so they're way ahead of us.
Yep.
So what are we looking at now?
She's counting it now.
35 days would be June 19th if we were to meet on Thursday, the 15th.
That's June 10th.
Oh, it's June 10th. It's a holiday.
So June 20th.
So we could meet June 20th.
Versus June 30th. That's the spread.
Yeah.
And then you could have an election on, what's the 21st day of the week?
21st of June?
Yeah.
Is the Saturday.
It was the Saturday.
Well, do you want to have an election on a Saturday? Probably not.
So it would be the Monday, the 23rd?
So the pairing would be 20, 23 versus June 30th, July 1.
Right.
Those are the options.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I can let the superintendent know that.
Sure, yeah.
That that's what you're looking at now.
I think that's preferable.
The next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Monday, May 5, 2025, at 5:15 in the Teachers' Lounge at Essex Elementary School, 12th Story Street. And the 2025 Annual Town Meeting will take place on Monday, May 5, 2025, at 6:45 PM in the gymnasium at the Essex Elementary School, 12th Story Street. Is there anything that was not anticipated?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Great.
Can I ask Annie a question?
Sure.
Annie, what'd you mean by that?
Oh, the moral stuff that you're, I mean, you said trees or gardens or, what do you mean instead of edges?
Yes, it's at the school.
Right.
Not for.
Okay. Yeah.
Root nodes.
What time is it?
It's 9:00.
9:00, 6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
Alba, do you have a license to sign over there?
Do I have a license? No.
I gave you, but you missed.
I signed it.
Put it back.
I did.
Jeez.
I did. I'll go through again.
How much money you got?
What's that? Is that your folder?
Yeah.
I swear to God, I signed it.
Is this it?
And I have nothing. Yeah, that's a license.
Which license was it?
I'm going to call a six-minute recess.
Sure you did?
I have nothing. You can just mute us. You don't need to go to fade to black.
Thank you. All right, it's 7 o'clock. We have our department head meeting. So I will go over to online. Val, I see that you've joined us. Would you like to unmute and give us an update for anything that you're helping spearhead?
Oh, thanks. We got the grant just recently from the Environmental Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And that's to update the open space plan. So we're working on doing a contract for that right now and hope to start on that within the next couple of weeks. And that's, yep.
Thank you so much. That's everybody online. Brooke, do you want to go first? Good evening.
Okay, so as far as our recent achievements, I know that my reports usually sound very similar. It's a very cyclical job, so every quarter we're doing the same thing. So I apologize for the repetitiveness. Basically, we've been collecting a lot of taxes lately. The excise bills, the first commitment went out in March, so we were collecting that in March. And then the real estate and personal property bills went out in April. We're currently collecting those. Also, the boat excise bills were mailed last week. And Commitment 2 for excise is going out this week. So we've been very busy with bills going out and payments coming in. As far as obstacles to current goals and objectives, I know I mentioned before, there was recent tax law changes back in November. And we're working with the tax software company and the bill printing company to incorporate those changes and just make sure that we're complying with all of that going forward. It's still been sort of like, these changes are happening, oh, maybe they're not. These changes are happening, they're really happening, oh, maybe they're not. But we're trying to keep on top of that. As far as expectations for the coming quarter, in May, I think we'll focus a lot on, you know, once we get past May 1st, focusing on bringing in any delinquent taxes that may be lagging a little bit behind and preparing for the FY '26 preliminary bills, which will be mailed July 1st. Also, open enrollment is in May, so if employees need to make any changes to their insurance, they can do that in May and for effective July 1. And we'll also need to update the payroll system with the new rates and update the retirement system with the new rates. So that's sort of a May-June project. Long-term goals on the horizon, a lot of reconciling and then reporting in the summer. And as I mentioned, I hope to become certified next fall. So those are the biggest long-term goals I have. I don't have any specific concerns to mention and no grants. Any questions?
No questions for me.
Let me, Brooke, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Jody.
Hello. All right, we'll start with economic development. Our downtown district is being maintained again. We met with an outside contractor to go over the scope of work, walked the causeway several times, and the causeway will be cleaned up by our contractor. And the annual plantings and some perennial replacements will be tended to by some very kind volunteers who show up in the middle of the night. We appreciate the bit of volunteerism because it really does help to keep the causeway in good shape. This is our second full season, and I think that it's shaping up. Paglia Park is back online, so the DPW will be mowing that. We are placing the stone benches back where they belong and are placed such that the gardens and whatnot that we have scoped out but don't have the money for quite yet, they will not need to be moved and they will fit into that landscape nicely. We added the trash barrels along the causeway, which was something that the businesses desperately were asking for because they were either getting all the trash at their points of business or people were dumping trash on the causeway. The DPW is also in charge of emptying them. We have the Centennial Grove fee schedule, which you had before you tonight, and there's considerable work still to do up there. The restroom's still in charge of Dan Mayer and his incredible group of volunteers. We are looking at the Grove Cottage and making some improvements to it so that we can do a test run of four to six rentals this year. Donna Roy and Brendan and I have been working together on looking at what that looks like as a rental and then perhaps looking at refurbishing the cottage entirely. So this year, there's some sprucing up outdoors courtesy of the DPW. We've had volunteers from through the Y. There's been some painting outside. And then we're looking at putting in some heating and cooling in the cottage itself to make it a little more attractive. There will be a porta potty up there as well. So Donna's feeling is that this is an extremely rentable piece of property. People no longer want things in their homes, so they're looking at it for birthday parties and small reunions and baby showers. So again, four to six rentals this year to test it out, to see what it is we need exactly and how we can make it a more valuable property. I think the challenges really are always funding for both additions on the causeway, of which we have planters being built by a local resident to go on some of the median strips in Martin Street, Main Street, Southern Ave, which was part of our initial plan. But again, funding is always the issue to do some of the bigger projects. Paglia Park, the thought there would be to have some tables with benches for people to be able to take out and eat on the causeway, as well as 24 Martin Street is still something that we had a plan, that we did during the pandemic, but we really don't have the funding to do that. Any questions on EDC?
Questions?
Nope.
All right, Finance Committee. Budget season was the longest season ever, I think, this year for the Finance Committee for Michaela. I can't say enough about how hard Michaela Nolan worked this year. It was her very first year as a town accountant. Not only our town accountant, but a town accountant. She took numerous trainings that were required by the state, and she still got the budget pulled together and the Finance Committee booklet under the deadline to go to print. I want to thank Brendan for all the time that you gave both Michaela and I to button that up. It was a challenge. It's an onerous process. It's done on spreadsheets. I think our future plan is to have Michaela look at not only the accounting software that we're using today, to make sure that we're using the right platform, but looking for some type of budgeting software. We are one of the few communities who have no access, our departments have no access to their data online. So Michaela's done a great job of giving, the department has reporting on a weekly basis, but it's still challenging. So that will be something to look for in the future. And again, we're not thrilled with the accounting system. It's. It's cumbersome. The reporting she does is cumbersome. One would think that you would create the reports once and then you would just change the date, and every week for every department, she has to create each report, export it, and then email it. So I think it's been helpful for department heads, incredibly helpful. It's been incredibly helpful for the Finance Committee to be able to have up-to-date numbers, but I think that there's probably something better, and that will, of course, come back to money. So there are only two other really viable options. I told her when she went to her training to make sure she made lots of friends with all the other town accountants, because that's your best source of information, is talking to other people. So that will be our plan for FY26, is to do a deep dive on accounting systems and budgeting software. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I see that Amy Akal joined us online. So Amy, I'm going to have you unmute, and if you'd like to give us an update as we come into Annual Town Meeting.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So we are preparing for the town meeting and the town election. We do have absentee ballots available for people who will be out of town on the day of the election, and also vote by mail is available if people would prefer to have their ballots mailed to them and vote at home. And that's really the focus of the next, you know, few weeks for us.
Great. Any questions for Amy? Amy, has dates been set for early voting?
We're not planning on doing early in-person voting. It's something that I debated about, but we've had such a small number of people even ask about absentee or vote by mail. I didn't think that it really was warranted, so I hadn't planned on doing that.
Makes sense. Great. Thank you, Amy. Chief Shamshack.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this being my first meeting, I wasn't sure of the exact formats, but I broke it down into a couple different categories: personnel, budget, fleet, and other. We did have some personnel changes. As you all know, Chief Francis has retired. I was promoted to Chief of Police. We promoted Detective Weeway to Sergeant. He's now a Sergeant on the eve shift. And we also hired Michael Sador, who's currently an FTO, and we hope to have him solo in the next few weeks. I believe you met him last meeting when you approved his appointment. As far as the budget, I've been having weekly monitoring and check-ins with FinCom and the town accountant. And just to echo Jody, Michaela is phenomenal getting us those weekly ledger reports. Really makes the prediction much easier. Tomorrow, I actually have a meeting with both of them. As we come into year end, we're going to try and see where we can shift some money and kind of avoid needing any reserve fund transfers, just kind of burn down other existing lines. We are aware of our leftover contractual time off. It's all one-for-one, so if one officer takes a day off, it has to be filled either through overtime or by moving a shift otherwise. So we're, we have a predictable way to see roughly how much we will need to move. The capital requests that we had were for cruisers. We have received one. The second is on the lot down at Colonial. The vehicle's there, but all of the equipment that goes into the vehicle is not, but they're hoping to have that built for us within the month. The additional capital articles we have at Annual Town Meeting, we requested the new weapons, and we're very hopeful that those will be approved so we can avoid costly maintenance and take advantage of a trade and sales promotion that's very fiscally responsible to the town. Touching on the fleet, we currently have three functioning line cars, and we're waiting on parts to have a mobile data terminal installed into the former admin car, which was the most cost-effective way to have another functioning line car that we already owned for the shortest amount of money. We would have been no further ahead on parts and outfitting if we had waited to do this or just traded it and then tried to get another vehicle, because as we can see, the cars that we did purchase and have, we still can't get equipment for them. The ATVs are running and functional. Myself and the fire chief did discuss possibly a woods or trail patrol based on complaints they would receive for fire safety. Our trailer that we have will need to have its wheels replaced for somewhat short money. The trailer is 20 years old, so I think it's time to maybe put a few hundred dollars into that to get that back up and running. Other items, we will be joining Nemlec on April 14th, and I'll serve as the representative for that. The three-year capital outlook for our body worn cameras, they'll no longer be supported by Motorola. I emailed Brendan today on how to proceed, and he directed me that this fall, when we do the five-year capital request, I'll include that in that. And the only other issue we had is that more of our body camera batteries are exploding. It's a known issue with Motorola. They just overheat and then they separate, and then it's all covered under warranty, so it's no cost to us. But other than that, all our equipment is in good shape. Any questions?
My question for you is going to be about the batteries exploding in the body cameras. Are they exploding inside the device, and is there a concern about corrosion in there? Do we have to clean it out? What's that process look like?
Motorola just says that it's a heat separation issue, and the battery itself is separate, so the camera clips into the top of it, so it's all contained within the battery. But it is a known issue through Motorola, and they seem to not worry about it. They'll just send you new batteries.
So it doesn't affect the camera at all?
No, it won't hurt.
Yeah, and it doesn't affect the camera?
Nope.
Just because it's clicking into the holster?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. I have no other questions.
What woods trails are you thinking about patrolling?
So I believe the fire chief got a complaint specifically off of Laurel Lane, that there might be some tents or other people going up there. But when we've done this in the past, we've gone all over from the pipeline to Laurel Lane to up along 128, so we, you can cover it all in a couple hours.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Harbor Master Pielo?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Be kind of brief. We have one new hire in John Ryan, who was appointed a couple months ago. Met with him today again. He's pretty pumped, retired merchant marine guy. Look forward to having him on the boat. Still using the existing Parker and the Whaler. There's a new radio going to be going into the Parker shortly, but within budget. We're always on the lookout for a new boat, and I reached out to Rockport on some specs for that, because it seems like it would be a decent fit. Obviously, we can tweak the dollars, but I think that's kind of like the size that we would need, is nothing too extravagant. But that's kind of the prospective upgrade. The transients will be serviced next year. We reached out to the mooring company, and they said that a lot of the transients will need routine maintenance next year, so we're kind of trying to budget for that. The mooring info software continues to work well for users as well as us. It's pretty easy to track financials of that, and I think that was probably the easiest thing I was able to provide Jody was because of that software stuff. Thank you to the DPW for resurfacing the ramp somewhat and getting some tailings down there. I think that's going to be, so far, public has been very happy that we were able to do that. It was getting pretty bad. At some point, there will have to be a discussion about the upper float on land due to tide rise, and I had some ideas about that, obviously within cost of what we decide, but it's just tide rise is really affecting that upper section all over town. It's not just there, obviously, but that's, tide rise is happening. So there's some ideas that I have to present on that. We have one seasonal transient booked so far. The kayak rack prospectively will be full. We have, I think, four spots left to fill on that. At least four moorings getting turned over this year. Hopefully, hopefully some more. It's the highest commodity real estate in Essex right now, so obviously the waitlist people are always anxious to get those. And our biggest challenge is, even though the river was dredged, it's tide still. So I was out to set the buoys a couple weeks ago, and there'll still be some tidal challenges in some different spots. It was improved, but Mother Nature kind of works in weird ways, so a lot of those problem spots are going to continue to be a problem. It's no different than building a dribble castle and having the tide come in. So that's our biggest challenge, and we're coming into season, so.
Dan, are the transients in year-round? They left in year-round?
They put winter balls on them.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, it's no different than a regular mooring. So the chain stays, but the winter balls go out. The chain over time, as you know, is affected, but they'll hold up for four or five years.
Okay.
Yep.
Al, do you have any questions?
I do not.
I don't either. Thank you. Chief Hassel?
Good evening. So, can you hear that? So, recent achievements, I will just follow up on Chief Shamshack's discussion on kind of patrolling the woods. We received an email just asking, there was questionable structures showing up on this person's property. Some of them had heat sources, small stove-type situations, so whether they were hunting or just kind of a, hey, cool place to hang out. We want to make sure that there's no active burning going on there or any squatting or anything like that from a fire, wildland fire-type situation. We've been lucky to get some rain, but everything is still ready to burn out there if we let it, so we want to be proactive with that. Recent achievements, both the chief and myself made it up to Essex Regional to recognize Telecommunicators Week. We're pretty excited to be able to go up two days and get them different sandwiches and breakfast stuff, so that was well-received, I think, and important to recognize what they're doing. We have two new hires, John Simon and Hugh Jest. Hugh lives in town, and John lives just outside of town in West Gloucester. John comes to us fully Fire 12 certified as well as EMT certified, which is a huge savings from a training standpoint, but also just being able to start implementing him pretty quickly is important. Hugh is going to need more training, but that's expected, so. Nick Molinari just completed his EMT training, which we're very excited about. It'll allow Nick to start working or start continuing his training on the ambulance to get him up to speed, and we'll be able to start using him as a second or third rider on the ambulance. We have been extremely busy with training, which probably explains our deficit in that line item, but we have had ASHER training, which was a joint 16-hour training with Manchester and some of the surrounding communities. This is our second go-around of ASHER. We had somewhere around five people attend. Reviews have been fantastic. It's geared towards active assailants, not only in schools but businesses, and basically law enforcement and fire working together to, you know, understand the plan, take command roles, and actually move patients and do a lot of simulated training. So really good stuff. We had a handful of people complete Instructor One, which is a pro board Fire Academy class, just kind of how it sounds. It allows people to better understand how to train other firefighters and roll out different classes, so great class. We had two people, myself and Patrick Roddy, complete Fire Prevention Officer One, which is another 40-hour class, and that was in Saugus. It allows us to have that first step in making sure that we understand fire code and how to find what we need. Patrick is actually our Fire Prevention Officer and is currently in Fire Prevention Officer Two, because he is an overachiever, though I think he's regretting that. We have been doing some joint training with Ipswich and some of the other surrounding communities at Majestic Dragon. They are now, it's kind of been a progressive training. This Thursday, they'll be doing some roof ventilation and different roof work or activities. And then Saturday will be a full Evolution Day, where it'll be pretty rapid simulated fire, fire attack and kind of moving through. So we've had a few folks be able to do that, which has been fantastic. And there's some command training there as well, so kind of running the scene stuff. We have a blasting class going on tonight, which is great. Helps kind of not only our firefighters but other surrounding communities be able to support some of the growth and development that require blasting. And then there's an ICS 400 class coming up that I'm attending and an emergency manager boot camp that I'll be attending. Outside of that, for recent achievements, I think that's enough. We have some obstacles. Really, it's a, it's a lack of time. I think, you know, there's a lot to get done. It's a full-call department, which is no surprise to anyone in this room. But it's, it's not a lack of people putting in hours. It's not a lack of people trying. It's just the pace of the fire department, not even from a call standpoint, but just a preparedness standpoint. And then you couple in the fire prevention role and then just what it takes to keep the place moving kind of on a day-to-day. It becomes challenging. We have, again, can't say it enough, we have some very dedicated people who spend a lot of hours down there, and it's very much appreciated, but unfortunately, there's only so much they can do. So it kind of brings me to the goal section or the, you know, longer term. We need to kind of revise our five-year plan or at least continue to develop it. It's got to include a staffing model that's going to be full-time at some point, not full, full-time, don't want to give anyone a heart attack. But I do think that in the more immediate future, we need to put a priority, or I will be putting a priority on creating the justification behind a Fire Prevention Officer for the town. Kind of a dual role where they'll be managing the fire prevention side and all the things that come along with that, with any projected building or projects in the town, as well as, you know, day-to-day responding to calls and providing some station coverage as well. So grant funding has been going pretty well. We've been successful. Again, shout out to Dan Doucet, who does a tremendous job with that and works very well with BZ and Ruth to make sure that we have everything squared away. We just got approved for the second round of safer grants from the state for about $2,700. First round was about $12,500, $12,400. With that, we've been able to get turnout gear, helmets, hoods, and this latest round, we're going to go and get an EV charger blocker. So basically, if an EV car goes into thermal runaway or it's malfunctioning, meaning thermal runaway, meaning the batteries are kind of burning or starting to smolder, we can plug this device into the charging port. It'll trick the car into thinking that it's in park mode and it won't go wonky and drive off on us or over us or anything like that. So great tool to have. And I'm trying to think. Grant funding also, we have three grants pending, just kind of waiting to hear back. Those are, one's geared towards wildland, one's geared towards a radio upgrade, and one is geared towards the tanker. The tanker is on borrowed time, I think would be a safe way to put it. It is going to be our next vehicle. So we recently just completed a, the development of a tanker committee, and initial correspondence went out to that committee, just kind of setting the playing field for what our objectives are as far as identifying a vehicle that will serve the town for 30 years, which is the expected life of that vehicle, and making sure that it's going to meet the needs not only now but kind of into the future, and how we can look at the suitability for that vehicle to help offset the potential needed or anticipated needed replacement of two other vehicles, which are both pumpers, within the next five to seven years. So trying to be smart about it and trying to make one vehicle kind of take a dual role without affecting ISO ratings and property taxes and everything else. So that's what that committee will be pointed towards. We do have some time before Fall Meeting, which is where we'll be targeting to put that warrant on. We feel like we can hopefully get through the summer. It's had a lot of work. It just went to Wenham a couple weeks ago and performed very well, so we're grateful for that. Just let me know if I'm talking too much, and I'm happy to sit down. That's fine as well. Also, Fire Prevention Officer, we talked about as far as that is going to be the priority within kind of those short-to-long-term goals. We're going to be reviewing SOPs and SOGs to make sure that we're kind of have all the proper SOGs and SOPs, standard operating procedure and guidelines. We're going to update job descriptions, and we are also looking to, as long as it gets approved, to We're gonna update job descriptions, and we are also looking to, as long as it gets approved at Town Meeting, implement first-due software, which will really help, dare I say, modernize the department. It will simplify a lot of things. It will kind of streamline a lot of our process. It will improve communication. So there's a lot of, a lot of value in that. And we're gonna strive for a little bit more balanced budgeting next year. I think this year will be a good opportunity to work with Jody and her team to kind of go through. And Josh and Josh Franklin and myself already kind of have plans to meet with a regular cadence to make sure that we're kind of looking at things as it evolves and making notes so that next budget cycle, we're a little bit more on top of things and not kind of trying to figure it out as we're flying the plane. Concerns, we've kind of crossed over. And that's about it. Unless you want me to keep talking.
Great. No, you did good. Any questions for Chief Hassel?
I do. I just have a question. It seems like we're getting more windier days. Is that a concern for the fire department with fires possible?
Yeah, only for two more days, because it ends on May 1st. But no, it is, it is a concern. I mean, it's... I knew that was gonna be my decision on a day-to-day basis during burning season. I didn't know how painful it was gonna be to be like, "Sorry, no burning today." And, you know, I want to write this long paragraph apologizing for why I'm not allowing you burning, because I'm the guy that's like, "Why aren't we burning today?" And so it's, it's a challenge for sure. And luckily, we got some water at the end. And I think these next couple of days are gonna be pretty calm wind-wise. So we'll be trying to be as lenient as we can. And I think to that point, kind of looking to the future, what I'd like to be able to do, look into next burning season, would be, a lot of, a lot of the challenge this year was the wind didn't start till, say, 1:00 in the afternoon. So creating an awareness or an understanding where we would roll that extinguishment time back to, say, noon, or whatever, before those forecasted winds, to try to allow some burning with a little bit more on maybe some of those key weekends. And then use staff that's already at the station to go around, didn't just check permits. It's a great exercise to do anyways. I did it last weekend, maybe. Made a lot of people nervous, but that wasn't the intent. It was just to kind of let people know we're out and, you know, remind people of full extinguishment versus partial extinguishment. It's the embers at night that, you know, you're trying to let your fire burn out to that fine dust, and all of a sudden, that fine dust is coated all over your yard. That's when we get called.
Yep. Thank you.
Peter, any questions?
No.
I have no questions either. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Chief Hassel just reminded me about the Telecommunicators Week. So just a shout out. I had the privilege of representing the Essex Board of Selectmen. I was able to bring treats up to North Shore Regional 911, and they gave me a tour of the facility. So these are kind of some of the unsung heroes that we don't get to acknowledge every day. So they have a special week in April where they do get recognized. And thank you to our Police and Fire Department for making sure that they were recognized. The Board of Selectmen brought them treats as well. I got to do it. It was super exciting. And I got a tour of the facility. It was amazing. So thank you to everybody at North Shore Regional for taking care of us 365 days a year. We appreciate that. Carla, last but not least, thank you for waiting.
All right. Hi, everybody. Carla Christensen, Library Director. So recent achievements in the library. I always like to start with the stats. I track everything just about. But we're on par with the circulation and kind of the movement of people and items that we usually see. We moved over 7,000 items between January and March, which is right on par. Our digital circulation stays a little bit high in the winter, starts to come down as people come out. So we're in that sort of shift right now as the weather is better. More people come to the library Monday through Friday. Fewer people come on Saturdays. The nicer the Saturday. Hopefully, they're all doing safe things, like not burning when they're not supposed to. But they will stop coming to the library eventually here. We extended our Saturday hours. I talked about, I think I reported that on our last. On February 1st, we started staying open for an extra hour until 1:00, and it's been met with great success. We've been sort of watching how people, you know, manage that time. It's starting to, well, the school vacation weeks are never good to do any kind of reporting. But we'll stay open on Saturdays through the end of June. So Saturday, June 28th is the last Saturday for that. The other thing we achieved in February was our new technology. It's installed for the circulation desk computers, as well as patron computers. So all new, installed by the consortium. So that was great. Some of our events over the first quarter, we had 55 programs, serving 458 people, many of them right up here in this lovely space. We always have three weekly ongoing kids programs. In addition to that, we had things like mini golf in the library. I know some of you were there. A Dungeons and Dragons club, lots of hands-on things like felting and printmaking and lino cutting. We had a local children's author in. We had Ted Reinstein, always a huge draw, talking about his new book. We hosted bowl painting for the open door right up here one day. Of course, the peeps, the peeps contest. Every library's gotta have that. And a college essay workshop. So we were super busy for this first quarter. I'm gonna talk about obstacles when I talk about concerns, just some potential things coming up. So I'm gonna move into expectations for the coming quarter. So I have a SCORE intern from the high school right now. So just for everyone. SCORE is an intern project that our graduating seniors here at Manchester Essex have to do. They need to serve 150 hours in an approved position. So I have a fabulous high school senior from right here in Essex, and she is both learning how libraries work and what that takes, learning lots of things. Her big project is to research and document and clean and label the library art collection. So we've been interviewing people, doing all kinds of interesting stuff. So it's really been fabulous. And we'll have a big reveal later this spring when that project is all finished. So that, the SCORE project runs from April into the middle of May. We're looking ahead to our kindergarten readiness program. So that's through our grant partnership with the CFCE in Hamilton-Wenham. They run a kindergarten readiness program that actually starts tomorrow and runs through June for people who've got kids that are that right age, getting ready for kindergarten. We have Essex Elementary kindergarten visits in early June, which is always a lot of fun. They get their, officially get their library cards. Adult Book Club continues through our last meeting is toward the end of June, because summer reading kicks off on June 18th. So stay tuned for more info about that. Our friends at the library are gonna be running the Pie Fest up here on Wednesday, May 7th. So be sure to come by and get some pie, starting at noon. And we will be closed, like all town offices, on Monday, May 26th for Memorial Day. Up next in programs, we've actually already had some fabulous April programs. Local author Rob Fitzgibbon talked about his book about two murders in Rockport in the 1930s. It was fabulous, super interesting. We have a Rummy Cube Club that's really popular, stress management workshops. We have an ongoing series of Level 1 Ancient Greek right now that meets on the second floor on Thursdays. You never know what you can find at your library. Floral arranging. We just hosted Si Montgomery at Shaylin Lou last weekend, the 19th. That was amazing, in partnership with all of the K-Ban libraries. This week, for school vacation, we had some fun things like Lego Lounge and different things for kids. Right up here tomorrow night, we're having Town Meeting 101, which is sort of a town meeting for newbies. Like, what do I expect when I walk into Town Meeting? We got a lot of requests for it, and Jeff and I had actually been talking about it. So Jeff Jones, Town Moderator, is going to be hosting that up here tomorrow evening at 7:00. And into May, our Ancient Greek class continues. We'll have a classical guitar concert right up in here, so non-amplified music. It's gonna be really lovely. He actually came and did a little test demo performance. It was wonderful. We're doing fun things for kids, like candy sushi, crafternoons. And the Friends will have the plant swap later in May, so watch the calendar. Right outside. It's always at 5:30, sort of late in the day. And then looking ahead to June, our Pet Loss Counselor will be there for grief support after pet loss. And we're looking at some pollinator and some other gardening programs. So always lots going on. Looking longer term, sort of past the next quarter. We're, of course, summer reading is a big one, because that starts in June 18th, but it goes all the way into August. But the theme is already decided. We're already, already working on those things. Over the spring and summer, I'll be surveying patrons around some of our specific holdings, like our magazine and cereal collection, just trying to figure out kind of what our long-term plan should be for that. And we're also looking at this notion of family programming. So rather than saying, you know, this program is for kids 5 to 11, offering more programming that whole families can attend. They can build something together. They can do a challenge together. They can learn something together. That's what we like to see, our families of all shapes and sizes coming together at the library. So in terms of concerns and sort of obstacles, I wanted to talk for a minute about the Institute for Museum and Library Services. So this has been in the news recently, the IMLS. So on March 14th, the IMLS was, was sort of defunded. And they are the one federal institution that provides both financial and sort of grant support to museums and libraries. That funding flows into each state, and then it's managed on the state level with support from the IMLS group in Washington. So those people all went home in March, and they're gonna be laid off permanently starting next week. And we have seen the impact. Massachusetts does not rely in a huge way on federal funding, not like other states. We're looking at about $4 to $5 million that flows into the state, that's then dispersed and managed through our Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. So that's the group that oversees libraries in Massachusetts. We've, the first set of cuts we've seen are to things like library programs and correctional facilities in Massachusetts, the Perkins Talking Book Program, which provides literacy support for people, for Massachusetts citizens who are blind and have low vision. So those are immediate, right? If you're a Massachusetts resident, you may not have access to those programs anymore. The one that has immediately impacted us here in our library is the elimination of all continuing ed and professional development that comes through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. So that was federally funded. And we all take advantage of that, right? That's part of our library system. So no more classes for us for the time being. The thing I want to say about the IMLS, though, is that while, you know, I don't use a Perkins Talking Book, you know, I'm not involved in a library at a correctional facility. The things that could be coming down the pike are things like our research databases, that every library in Massachusetts has access to. Those are supported with federal dollars. In our library loan, the Commonwealth Catalog, we move, you know, millions of books every year in this state through the Commonwealth Catalog and the courier service that's provided with federal funding. We move books from the entire country via another courier service that's federally supported. Our Overdrive state contract is partially federally funded. So if you love your Libby, now's the time to start paying attention and stand up. So we're absolutely watching this day-to-day. The trustees and I talk about this, you know, at our regular meetings. But, you know, these are real things that we could start feeling. And I just want everyone to, you know, speak up. If this is your thing, I know people who will go out and march in the streets for Libby. So that's the, one of the things that's very common here. But, but this is real, and we all need to be paying attention. And that is everything I have to report. Any questions?
My question is regarding the continuing education and professional development material. Is this for staff specifically, or is this for everybody that is using CE materials?
Oh, this is just, it's for library staff.
Just staff.
Yep. So directors, anyone who is employed, who's not a volunteer. They also provide trustee training as well. So all library trustees go to training through them.
What do you, have you done any sort of modeling of what the financial impact of losing these federal funds looks like?
We started to. I don't have anything to, to present formally yet. We've started to at the consortium level. You know, it's really hard, because the consortium, you know, someone will say, "Well, gosh, you have 36 libraries, right? You can band together." What's hard is that, you know, those 36 libraries also, you know, work with the Clams, 50 libraries, and that's how we can afford a courier service, right, across the whole state. It's not as though everyone can start chipping in, you know, a little bit here and there. That's, there's, it's such a huge sort of tentacles out into the state. That's what makes it really challenging. I mean, some things, you know, we probably couldn't afford to replace state databases. That's a serious amount of money. That might just go away, and we just don't have access to it anymore. So the state, you know, the state, of course, doesn't have money to replace all federal funds, but that's certainly something the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, you know, is looking at as well. Are there other ways that this money can come, can come to us?
Okay. Thank you.
No, the only thing I would say is that when you do start seeing, oh, this is gonna be an issue, I think just letting us know.
Absolutely.
Because I do, you know.
Right.
How do we get the word out to get people?
Right, absolutely. All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Carla.
Okay, it's that fun time of the evening where we take public comment. Is there anybody in the room with public comment?
Hi. Two things. Manchester just passed the school budget to, I think it was $399 to $25. Good news on that. And then I just also wanted to clarify. Pam did respond to your request for information on the 18th and said that they're preparing the information, and it should be here the week of April 28th. So today is the 28th. You should see it this week.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online with a public comment? If so, please unmute yourself and state your name and address. Okay. Hearing nobody online, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:48 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.